We will start our meeting for the fifth day in February. Would you please stand and have the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a roll call. Holly?
All councilors present, and the quorum has been declared.
Thank you, councilor. Next item is the approval of the agenda. Judy or Holly, do we have any changes, modifications?
None, no, we do not.
I'll entertain a motion.
I motion we approve the agenda as presented.
Second. I have a motion and a second discussion. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Next item.
Mayor, there's something wrong with Michael Stefano's beep-in. It's not showing up.
Okay, we've got that straightened up. Thank you, Jim. Next item on the agenda is citizen comment, and we hold that to three minutes. First card I have here is Irem Esquivel. Thank you for being here, item.
Oh, thank you for having me. Council, thank you for having me. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Lucero and Charlie for listening to what I had to say about, listen to what I had to say about the RV parks because we're conjoined, our properties are joining what the city wants to trade. So I just wanted to make some concerns about what was going to go on with the dykes going on, the trash. Is the city going to be responsible for it? I would like to know what the city and the Corps of Engineers had intentions for the dykes because I know there was an agreement at one time, that there was an agreement that the Corps of Engineers was only going to use the dykes for flood control and patrol. And that's what I'd like to know, the guidelines for what that was stated. And the property that was Rin Nichols' property before mine, I want to see the papers that say that she had easement, that she had given easement to the city of Alamosa. Because I'd like to see those papers and see what they say. I know I talked to Pat and I talked to Don the other day, and they said they were going to get them to me. So I'm looking forward to seeing that. And then again, I'll probably be calling yous again and seeing go from there. But I do appreciate your time and the good work that you're trying to do on this RV park and everything that goes along with it. I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Esquivel. Next card we have is Mr. Dan McCann. Dan, it's good to see you again.
Good to see you too, mayor. Dan McCann, 1809 Sunset, Alamosa, Colorado. For me, the only good thing about the Super Bowl was the Tebow ad. Now, that was funny. He landed on his feet and wasn't all banged up on Monday morning.
Thank you very much, Dan.
You're welcome, mayor.
Next item on the list is oath of office for Ty Coleman, councillor-at-large. Judy?
Face me and face everybody else that wants to watch. Do you, Ty Coleman, subject to the penalties of perjury, solemnly swear that you will support and uphold the constitutions and laws of the United States and of the state of Colorado and the charter and ordinances of the city of Alamosa and faithfully perform the duties of councillor-at-large which you are about to undertake? Congratulations, and you may take your seat at the dais.
Thank you very much.
Ty, welcome to the Alamosa City Council. Gentlemen, if you'd like to say a few words, please feel free.
This was a tough selection. We had some really good candidates that came before us, and all the candidates that came before us for this position would have been top qualified to do the position, and it was very hard to do it. So, welcome.
Thank you, Charlie. Anyone else? I will also reiterate what councillor Gregor had to say. It was a tough decision. We had some top-notch candidates, former councillors, mayor, really great individuals in our community. But in the end, Mr. Coleman, you were our choice, and we welcome you here with open arms, and hopefully, we have a lot of faith in your ability, and we hope, we all hope that we can work well together. Okay? All right, thank you. Next item on the list is selection of mayor pro temp. I believe it's a two-year period, so council will have an opportunity to select that. Judy, would you like to say a little bit about the process?
What you're being handed there is a ballot with six names on it, everyone on council who is not the mayor. And I would encourage you to first of all discuss who is interested in the position. I have made no assumptions and left the door open for anybody who wants to express interest. So if you're interested, please express that. If you're not interested, please express that too, and that will allow councillors to mark any names off and not vote for those who are not interested. This is a simple ballot. We'll just vote for your top choice, and I will tally those when you're ready.
I guess I'll start from this corner, mayor. I'm still interested in the position, and this might be my last two years on this council. So if the council would allow me to serve my time out as mayor pro temp, I would really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gregor. Anyone else? Councillor Johnson?
Yeah, I've chatted with a couple of you guys over the last probably year about this position, and I've shown interest, but at this time, I have so many irons in the fire with other things I have going on that right now, I don't think is a good time for me for this position, so I would prefer not being considered. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Johnson. Councillor Hill?
Yeah, I have no interest in being the mayor pro temp.
I have no interest. I don't have the time for the commitment, so I think Charlie's done an excellent job, and I would back him.
Councillor Coleman?
I've been approached about the position, and I want to thank, thank you for that opportunity, but at this time, I won't be able to participate in that position.
We have councillor Stefano left, or would you?
I had thought about it, but I think I'm going to go with Charlie.
All right. Folks, go ahead and mark your ballot, and we'll give them to Judy, and she can announce the new mayor pro temp for the next couple of years. We thank you for that. Charlie? It looks like.
Need some help counting those there, Judy?
Congratulations, Charlie.
Thank you, and like I said, I appreciate your support, and we'll continue the hard work, working together as a team.
Absolutely. Anyone else have any comments? If not, we'll move on to the proclamation, FFA Week. Mr. Rice is here. Thank you for being here, Mr. Rice.
Hi, I'm Brenner Hovely. I'm Alamosa FFA's president. This is Emily.
I'm Emily Kennison. I'm the vice president.
This is Alicia Lucero. She is our reporter. And Omero Valdez, who is our secretary. February 15th to the 22nd is FFA's National FFA Week, and our theme this year is Ignite. We have a proclamation we would like, it's kind of big, we'd like the mayor to sign just to kind of start us off. Also, on, what is it? Tuesday the 18th. At 6 o'clock, we're having a ceremonial ribbon cutting of our new ag building, and we would like you guys to come. And greenhouse.
I will be very happy to be there, and I also invite any member of council to be there as well. I think we're all united in the fact that we support FFA.
Show up, he'll give you a T-shirt.
Very good, very good. Would anyone else like to say a few words?
We just want to say thank you for letting us come.
And thank you, ladies. And with that, I will read this proclamation, and then we will all join you down there to give that to you, because I've got the signed copy up here. Whereas, FFA and agricultural education provide a strong foundation for the youth of America and the future of the food, fiber, and natural resource systems; and whereas, FFA promotes premier leadership, personal growth, and career success among its members; and whereas, agricultural education and FFA ensure a steady supply of young professionals to meet the growing demands in the science, business, and technology of agriculture; and whereas, the FFA model, learning to do, doing to learn, earning to live, living to serve, gives direction of purpose to these students who take an active role in succeeding in agricultural education; and whereas, FFA promotes citizenship, volunteerism, patriotism, and cooperation. Therefore, I do hereby designate this week of February 15th through 22 as FFA Week, and I will sign this as mayor and on behalf of council. We thank you.
Mayor, could we get you to come down and sign this one so we can display it over the new ag building?
Absolutely. Gentlemen, would you join me, please?
I got that.
Thank you.
You're tall, so you can have a little.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm going to try to come to the council open house at 4:00 to 8:00. Don't pay the house fee until 4:00 a.m. on Tuesday the 18th. I'm going to have to backfill you. I don't want to serve you dinner. It's a lot of paper, there'll be a lot of stuff.
Hi, how are you?
Pork fries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Pretty nice bill. Thanks for asking. Thanks very much. The green hat, the nice green sweater. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Ralph. Well, we're all. But we're about awful punks, you know, that's something. Thank you, doll. Thank you.
Thank you, council. That's one of the fun things that we get to do, isn't it? Next item on the agenda is consent calendar A, and that consists of accept planning commission's recommendation to approve permitted use by special review to allow outdoor sales used group C-293 in a commercial business zone at 703 Main, the golf course HVAC bid award, authorize staff to sign audit engagement letter with Walt Smith and Bateman and Associates for Audit Services for the 2013 fiscal year, and approved minutes of regular meeting January 15, 2014. Any discussion, council?
Yes, I'd just like to mention that I'm pleased that the local plumbing company, Vandola Plumbing, had the low bid for the HVAC at the golf course in the amount of $45,500. And that was much lower than the amount budgeted, so that's a savings to the city. Thank you.
There's no other questions? I move we approve consent calendar A as presented. I have a motion and a second to approve consent calendar A. Start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Next item is regular business, business brought forward by city staff, public works, a first reading on ordinance number 2, 2014, and ordinance amending chapter 8 flood damage prevention to the code of ordinances of Alamosa, Colorado. Mr. Kostlin, would you like to review this with us, please?
Our flood ordinance has always been basically a reflection of the FEMA ordinance. The Colorado Water Conservation Board in 2010 actually wrote new regulations, and again, those are state regulations, but if we're going to be able to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program, we have to adopt basically their regulation. This is their regulation in our ordinance form, essentially. The biggest difference is the lowest floor elevation now has to be one foot above what's known as base flood elevation, instead of at or above. They say lowest floor, including basement, but that really doesn't apply to us very often. The only area that's really affected by this are in flood hazard areas, which in our particular case is primarily the Cottonwood subdivision, which is the area just east of the river. The remainder of the city is protected by levee, and it's in a Zone X, so it's not in the hundred-year flood hazard area. So the area, again, that's affected is primarily the golf course area. Are there any questions about the ordinance itself?
I had a comment, Don. I'm kind of confused here because who do we actually answer to? Do we answer to CWCB? Do we answer to FEMA? Do we answer to the Corps of Engineers?
Yes.
You know, and it seems like.
We answer to all three, Charlie.
Yeah, and it seems like everybody, the three groups, sometimes don't even talk to each other.
You know, it's kind of like an engineering project. When you're engineering, let's say, a water treatment plant, every engineer is going to put a fudge factor in there. And if you've got three engineers, you've got three fudge factors on top of fudge factors. And what we have right now is the CWCB putting a fudge factor on top of FEMA. But we are required to comply by the state. So I'm not saying this is a bad thing, understand me.
No, and I agree with you, but I think sometimes they need to talk to each other and say, you know, if there's already something in place that's pretty much doing the job, why jump over and put something stronger in, you know?
Yeah, when we have the state coming in and imposing stronger regulations, we're looking at potential for something like that in arsenic as well. It does become problematic, and it can become expensive. This particular case, it's for all new homes are going to have to comply. So for a new home to come into compliance is not that much of an issue in terms of the overall cost. But when you get things like the arsenic, if they're going to change the arsenic levels again in not 10 years before we even have a chance to pay for the last change, and if that's coming from the state level, why would we do that to ourselves? Because we are doing it to ourselves. But, and again, in this particular case, it's probably not going to be a huge cause factor. But there's been too many cases, particularly with the CWCB, where they're putting requirements on that don't, well, that exceed existing standards that were set by federal agencies. And they're the ones who are running like the National Flood Insurance Program. They are going back and looking at how high our levee should be and all those types of things. And again, their standards are not the same as what the standards were when the levee was built. So again, when you change standards on existing facility in such a way that you've got to upgrade the facility at very great cost, we need to do that with a lot of caution.
Are there any other questions for Don? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I motion we approve on first reading ordinance number 2, 2014, and set it for a public hearing on February 19th, 2014.
I second. Have a motion and a second on ordinance number 2014. Is there any further discussion? Start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is people's place annexation agreement. Don, or?
Actually, that would be me, mayor.
That would, I'm sorry.
And I don't see anyone from Alamosa County here. This annexation agreement that you had before you was drafted subsequent to your approval of annexation of People's Place into the city. And based on that annexation and the ordinance that approved that annexation, I put together this agreement. It has been shared with the county and discussed with the county. As you may recall, the county had requested a waiver of tap fees upfront with the annexation, and you decided that you would consider a request for waiver of tap fees if and when the county applied for those fees and not put that in the agreement. So I believe that the county understood that. They indicated to me that they still had a few questions about what kind of fees they might be looking at when they developed, and I have had discussions with Jason Kelly concerning that. They may have resolved that on their own. So I do not yet know that the county will accept this agreement in this form. I have no reason to think that they won't. But I would propose that unless you have any questions about it, that you approve it in this form and approve, approve that Heather can sign it on behalf of the city. If the county has issues and wants to talk about it at some future time, we can take that up. But it's before you now. Someone's got to make the first move, and it might as well be us.
Thank you, Mr. Swishow. Are there any questions for staff?
Yeah, Eric, if I understand this correctly, we're just asking the county to approach us when the tap fees become due and not just arbitrarily approve everything right now. Is that correct?
Correct. That was your decision back when you approved the ordinance, was to say, look, if you want to ask us to waive a tap fee when it becomes an issue, we'd be happy to consider it. We just don't want to waive it right off.
And we're in no way rejecting any. All we're doing is saying approach us when the time's right.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Johnson.
Thank you, mayor.
Rusty? I mean.
Charlie?
Okay. Thank you, mayor. I did have a question, Eric. In section, in Article 6, Section 1, where it talks about bringing water in, for them to bring water, how does that work, Eric? I didn't really understand that section.
Well, we have in our annexation guidelines, our annexation handbook, a requirement that a developer requesting annexation into the city bring to the table a sufficient amount of water to cover the water uses for that annexation, or in the alternative, cash equivalent for that water. And in general, when the city has done annexations, it has taken a cash equivalent based on what the San Luis Valley Water Conservancy District is charging at the time for water. So what 6.1 does is recognize that we don't really expect the county to come with a water package, but that they can come for purchasing water, come with cash equivalent for purchasing water. And then the rest of paragraph, section 6, describes how we're going to calculate how much water they have to come with. And we're going to do that not at the time of annexation, but rather at such time as they develop on that annexation parcel, and each time they would have to come with either water or the cash equivalent.
So you had a chance to talk to their attorney and pointed that section out?
Yes.
And they agreed with it?
Well, I, they haven't, they haven't come back with an agreement or a disagreement yet at this point.
Because the point I want to make is that in the past, annexations, I don't, and I might be getting Alzheimer's, but I don't remember us ever doing that, water for, or money with the county. And the reason, I think one of the reasons is because we're actually, it's like a form of a tax, and we're actually going after the same people. You know, they represent the same people we represent, and when we start charging stuff like that, we're charging the same people the same amount, we're kind of like double taxation in the sense. And I personally, I don't agree on something like that. And like I said, in the past, I don't think we've done it, and there's been several other projects that I've seen that we haven't done that either. So I think what's fair is fair across the board. So, and I know, I'm sure Don has some comments.
Don, I didn't know if you wanted to provide a little history on some of the recent annexations.
I'm not, I'm not talking to your point that this is another governmental agency. I'm talking to what we've done in the past. This started roughly '98, '99, shortly after we finished the comp plan, which is when we got the annexation guidelines, and that's when we started doing it. The first instance was the Walmart annexation, and because other than Walmart, at the time, that's the only facility we knew was going in there, we didn't know how much water. We knew how to calculate use, but we didn't know what the uses were going to be. So at the time, when Walmart came in, they paid a proportionate share for the water based on our assessments for various uses, because we've got assessments for retail, for offices, for homes, for whatever. And that pattern has pretty much carried through. Everybody else on that same piece of property within that annexation, when they developed their property, whether it be the Hampton Inn or the Holiday Inn Express, or the bank, or whomever, when they developed their property and came in to get their tap, for a hotel, we know how many rooms they're going to have, and that tells us how much water they're going to use plus landscaping. When they came in for their tap, they paid a fee at that time for water assessments. So we have a water assessment along with a tap fee, and we've been on the same thing on every annexation since. Because typically, on larger annexations, we don't know how much of the property is going to on larger annexations, we don't know how much of the property is going to develop. When Blue Sky, uh, annexed the property, uh, South First Street out there, over by the auto mall, and it was a large chunk of property, much of which is still vacant. When, uh, rural housing comes in to build a home over there, for each tap, there's an additional water assessment. Uh, so that's how it's always been collected. So, we have been collecting the fees on all those annexations. We collect them at the time that somebody comes in for their tap, because that's the time when we know what it's going to be used for, what the density of use is going to be, and how much we need to charge. Uh, I will say, and I've, I've talked to, um, Heather and some other people, I think at some point what we need to do is incorporate this into any new tap, whether it be a new annexation or not, uh, because it's new water. And again, whether it's an annexation or it's, uh, new development in, um, Cottonwood Estates, which was annexed 40 years ago, it's, it's still new water, and we should be charging that assessment. So, now, we're going to be reworking our, our whole tap fee schedule to incorporate that. Right now, we're only assessing it on property that was annexed since roughly 1999. Um, we will probably be expanding that for all new taps instead of just property. And, and the other problem we run into, every time we get a new tap, Julie turns around to me, are they part of the water assessment charge? Yes. Or no. Yeah, it, so it's, it gets a little complicated to keep track of, because we've been doing this long enough that, uh, that's not something you're going to keep in memory anymore. So, what, what we're looking at doing is modifying our entire, uh, tap fees. But from a historical perspective, everybody was annexed since this policy went into effect is indeed paying an assessment.
And, and Don, I, I totally agree with you on these different annexations. But when you're dealing with another form of government, like the county or even the school district, that represent the same exact people, it's coming out of the same pocket, so to speak.
And I don't argue that a bit.
You know, and that, that's the point I'm trying to make, you know?
Yeah, I, I fully agree with that.
I totally agree, any form of annexation, you know, but when you're dealing with the same taxpayer over and over, I disagree, you know? So, that's what I stand.
Thank you, Charlie. Is there anyone else that has a comment for Don, or a question of Don? Staff? No one else? Well, with that, I will entertain a motion. Do I hear a motion, counsel, or shall we just table this until the county agrees to sign it?
I, I would authorize the city manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the city.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second on the annexation agreement of People's Place. Uh, is there any further discussion? Start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried six to one with Counselor Diego casting the no vote.
Next item is a finance item, uh, Resolution Number Four, 2014, uh, Resolution Making Supplemental Appropriations and Authorizing Expenditures in Excessive Amounts Budgeted for the City of Alamosa in Ordinance Thirteen, 2013, also known as Second Budget Amendment. Thank you, Amanda.
What the resolution in front of you does is clean up all of the personnel items that we have been talking about over the last few weeks. Um, bringing the legal services in from operations up into being, um, an employee. Um, the, um, changeover of the custodian staff from, um, the Parks and Rec Department over into the General Fund. Um, those are the two main items that are being done. Um, at this point, I did not change to move the, um, fund amount from the Recreation Fund to bring it over into the General Fund and over to, to cover some of those custodial charges, because we still have some golf course items and some different items that we're looking at. Um, so I'm going to still keep that in the Recreation Fund, um, until we see what some of these other costs are coming through. That way, we don't have to backfill from the General Fund back into that department to cover some of those things. So, if you were wondering why that transfer wasn't there, that's, that specific reason. But other than that, the majority of this resolution is just the cleanup of the personnel items. Um, and also, it also incorporates bringing in the interns into, um, the city manager. Um, previously, we thought we were going to be able to get a full-time intern for two years. That did not materialize. Um, but we do have three interns that are onboard, um, more part-time, but still are going to be able to function and do some of the items that we had previously hoped for.
Thank you, Amanda. Uh, does anyone have any questions for Amanda?
I, I didn't have a question, mayor, but, uh, and on the conclusion of this, I didn't quite understand it. It says, "The changes allows for efficiency use of technology for two city buildings that are currently have limited availability to our city network from day-to-day operations."
That's a copy and paste from the previous budget amendment.
Oh, okay. I was trying to, I was trying to figure out how janitors.
No, that, that didn't come across when I saved it. My, that's my error.
Okay. Thanks, mayor.
Thank you, Charlie. Anyone else?
If there's no questions, I move that we approve Resolution Four, 2014, amending the 2014 budget.
I second, I second it.
Have a motion and a second. Um, any discussion? Start voting, please. Amanda?
Holly.
Holly, I'm sorry.
That's okay. The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, Holly. Next up is City Manager Legal, uh, Water Rules and Regulation Update. Heather and Eric? Or Don?
For a number of years now, and you can kind of, in any way you want, you start 1998, when they started working on the Rio Grande Decision Support System, which is the model that calculates flows within the valley. Um, or you can go back four years ago, when we actually convened an advisory committee of, um, people here in the valley to develop well rules. It's been a, a long and sometimes, um, twisted, I would say, process trying to get to where we are. I think we are at the point, however, so that we know the general shape of the rules. We're not final yet. We've got a meeting in March 12th. Uh, I do know they originally hoped to get the rules out yet this spring. I guess it depends on how you define spring. Um, and we'll be going through another draft on March 12th. There'll probably be another couple of months before, after that, or before we see anything in the absolute final condition. But, um, they're firm enough, but now that we can probably get a pretty good idea how it's going to impact us, um, there's really two things. Well, let me back up a step. The basic premise is that anybody pumps, uh, pumps out of a well is affecting the flows on the river, one way or another, reducing the flows in the river. And somehow, um, that's got to stop. And in fact, not only has to stop today, we have to go back and pay back for all those losses that have been occurring in the past. And that's got to be done a couple of different ways. Actually, the payback's only done in one way. Um, they have used the model I was referring to that measures, um, flows throughout the valley, be it the confined aquifer, the unconfined, uh, or surface flows, and how they interrelate. They've used that model to calculate how much depletion there is to certain, uh, surface flows, uh, that are beyond to senior water rates users. Um, and, and how much, uh, pumping will, will affect those surface, surface flows, and not only how much will affect them, when will that effect be felt, and where will it be felt? Uh, part of the effort to do that, uh, they put confined wells, mostly confined wells, not all of many stretch, and one particular area they refer to as the Alamosa-Wahara, uh, Response Area. And that's essentially wells between Alamosa and Wahara, and up to Manavista actually for the confined wells, not the unconfined. And we've measured the impact, uh, to, to the surface, um, to surface users. Uh, and it's not impacts just to the Rio Grande River. It's also impacts to the Wahara, uh, the Alamosa, and the Caneos. Uh, we will owe water to all of them. And not only will we owe them a certain amount of water, we are going to have to make it up in the amount and the time that that loss occurs. So, it's not like you could just fill up a truck if you get a truck big enough and go up to the head of Wahara and, and dump it in and say, we're done. It doesn't work that way. Uh, it's got to be paid back over time. Uh, so, on the Rio Grande, uh, which is where our, our biggest, uh, depletion is, uh, we're, we're going to have a certain amount. Now, we're on the Rio Grande stem. That gives us some options. Uh, we are not on the, the more southern, you know, the Caneos, um, see if I get this straight, uh, the Alamosa and the Wahara. Uh, we don't, we're not on those stretches. They're below us, uh, and relative to the, to Rio Grande. So, it's harder for us to make up that water. Um, there's two ways we can do it, however, or two mechanisms in which we can do it. One is through the subdistrict. Now, I'm sure most of you have heard about Subdistrict One and, and the formation there. Uh, we would be probably Subdistrict Four if we went into a subdistrict. Uh, we were at, Pat and I went, attended a subdistrict meeting. Uh, Greg was there as well, uh, a couple of weeks ago, and they were talking about how they're planning on forming the subdistrict, because again, they're relatively early in the process. And there's some question about whether or not the city could even join the subdistrict as such. Uh, we still have the option of contracting the subdistrict if that does turn out to be the case. And as, we can contract with the subdistrict, pay them X amount of dollars to do what they're doing anyway, and we take advantage of part of it. That's one way to do it. Uh, the other way to do it is our own augmentation plan. Um, there's advantages and disadvantages to both. Uh, cost, obviously, is something we're going to have to work out. We don't have absolute numbers yet, because we don't know what the subdistrict's going to charge the pump. We don't know what the admin fees are going to be for well. Uh, we've got a range. We can come up with a range based on what's going on in Subdistrict One, and try to project that to Subdistrict Number Four. Um, but, you know, we don't know those no, numbers for sure yet. Uh, augmentation, that means we're going to have to go out and buy water someplace. How much is that water going to cost at the places we have to buy it? Uh, we don't know that for sure, because we haven't bought it yet. Um, but again, those are going to be the two options. Uh, because there's another element to this. We're not just making up the water to the rivers. We have to maintain that confined aquifer by itself. That's, that's a separate goal. Supports this one, but it's a separate goal. That is, the aquifer's got to have roughly the same capacity, or the same amount in it, that it had in the time period, uh, 1978 to 2000. Uh, and, and obviously, we're quite a bit below that right now. So, we want to get those artesian pressures back to where they were during that time period. Now, they're going to fluctuate year to year. There's no question about that, because the recharge is going to fluctuate year to year. Uh, but we want to bring those pressures back to what they were within that time period, and, and we'll have specific numbers for each particular year and what we have to do, uh, depending on what recharges and, and, uh, other factors are going to come into play each year. Um, but in our particular case, for an example, during that time period, 1978 to 2000, the city was pumping roughly 2,000, uh, or 2,100 acre feet per year. It varied a little bit in there, of course. It's never the same every year. And today, we're pumping roughly 2,600 acre feet. So, we've got 500 to 600 acre feet that we're going to have to make up, just to get back to what we were for that time period. But because these rules have not been in place, and we've drawn that aquifer down so much further than that, we have come up with even more to help make up that deficit. Subdistricts are going to, are facing the same thing, exactly the same thing. That's why they're being formed. Um, again, whether or not it's going to be better for the city in terms of costs and other things to join the subdistrict or do our own augmentation plan, we don't know for sure yet. And then that's, that's what we're looking at. We're looking at the relative cost. We're looking at what water's going to be available. Uh, and, and subdistrict's doing the same thing. Uh, and whether it'll be more economical and better for the city for us to do this on our own through an augmentation plan, or to join the subdistrict. Uh, those, those are really the only two options we have. Uh, we've talked about possibly getting together in Manavista, maybe in Wahara, and kind of forming our own subdistrict. Uh, but that's, that's basically just a glorified aug plan in that case, because you're, you're only dealing with three entities. Maybe throw in four East Alamosa, because they're going to have to do something too. Um, we don't, well, again, they, they plan to basically publish the rules, rules this spring, and I, I wouldn't want to pick a date for that. But when they publish, publish the rules, first thing they're going to do is go to Water Court. How long it's going to take to get through Water Court is, of course, very dependent on how many objectives it's going to be, but I can't help but think there's going to be a number of object, objectives. So, I suspect it's going to be in a Water Court for a while. But once those water, once those rules are approved by Water Court, we're going to have a specific amount of time to come into compliance, or they're going to come down and start shutting down our wells, uh, which is really not an option for us. We can't, we can't shut down our wells, and, and we can't just cut our use in half overnight. Um, what, the reason we're bringing this to you tonight is, first, so you know where these well regulations are going, and where we are in the process. And then have some idea what impact it's going to have on the city. Uh, it's going to get more expensive. There's no question about that. Uh, the less water we can get by with pumping, the better off we're going to be, because that's, that much less we have to offset. If through conservation, we can come from 2,600, uh, acre feet per year down to 2,200, well, we've saved 400 acre feet right there. May well turn out to be the cheapest augmentation plan we can, you know, come up with. Um, we don't expect you to do anything tonight, but what we are trying to do is let you know, you know, the rules are coming. There's no question about what the rules are coming. What the rules are going to do, we're going to have to make it up in time and in place on a number of different rivers, including some that are below, uh, anything we can have direct influence on. Uh, we're going to have to make the aquifer sustainable, not by ourselves. Everybody in the valley's on this. This, this is not unique to the city. It affects everybody who pumps. Uh, so that's what it's at. Do you have questions about where the regulations are, where they're going, or how they're going to affect us?
Don, one of the questions that I might have would be, um, how soon are these, uh, rules and regulations going to be made available to the public as well as to the city? And uh, what amount of time do you believe will be allotted, allotted to us to come up with a solution, whether we are going to either, um, form a subdistrict or have an augmentation plan?
The rules are available right now through the Division of Water Resources, uh, website. I've got copies of the drafts. Anybody's been going to the meeting would have copies of the drafts. Easiest way to get them, though, is go to the, uh, the website for the Division of Water from the state. Again, I can certainly pass on my copy to you. I just got another version. Again, it's in draft form so far. I just got the Umtene draft. I don't know if you have any idea how many drafts there's been, Eric. I don't. That just came in this afternoon. And I've got that electronic, both electronic and hard copy format. Anyone wants it, just let, let me know. I will publish that on the city website, if that's okay. Um, so they are available. When are they going to go in effect is kind of an open question. Again, their target was this spring, which is kind of a vague term. Eric, uh, I don't, I don't know if you've heard anything different than that. Uh, I think it is reasonable to expect to have them out, you know, this first half of this year. How long is it going to spend in Water, Water Court? Again, that, that's a guessing game. If I were personally to make a guess, I'd say two years. That, I'm telling you flat out, that's just a guess. I don't know. Eric's going to have a more educated guess than I would, uh, if you'd care to express one.
I, it, it, not necessarily more educated, just more brow beaten. Uh, that's as good a guess as any, Don. And it's not just Water Court, and then there's, there's, of course, the Court of Appeals, so, uh, which, which in a Water Court case is the Supreme Court. So, uh, two years is not, not unreasonably long for that process, I'd say.
Certainly. Sometimes, I mean, within the next five years. Certainly within the next five years. Uh, because again, there's, there's a time period that we are given once the, the rules are finalized to come into compliance. It's, it's not overnight you got to do it. But that's not a very long time period either. Uh, we know what's coming down. We've got a pretty good idea of the form of what's coming down right now. There's some specific boundaries. Might change a little bit north or south or whatever, but overall, we know the form of the regulations right now. Uh, we're, we're pretty much wordsmithing the rules is, is what's happening at this point, not changing the meaning of the rules so much.
Thank you, Don. Uh, any questions?
I did. I had a question for Donna. Out of, out of that 2,600 acre feet that we pump each year, how much of that, that we send through a wastewater treatment plant and dump right back into the river? And is that going to have any weight?
It could potentially have weight. Uh, without knowing exactly how we'll be part of a, whether we do an aug plan or whether we do subdistrict, uh, might be measured a little bit different. But we put that roughly 50%. But we put that roughly fifty percent of what we pump directly back into the river through the wastewater treatment plant.
Just fifty percent?
Yeah, it's about ninety percent in the winter time, but it drops down percentage-wise quite a bit in the summertime because of the irrigation. Obviously, it doesn't go back to wastewater.
So that's going to carry some weight on, as far as what we're...
That will certainly carry some weight, yes.
Thank you, Charlie. Jen?
Don, can you explain to me the red lines on the map, please?
The red lines that you see are basically the boundaries of what they call the response area. And everybody's assigned to a response area. We've been assigned to the, what's referred to as the Alamosa-La Jara response area, which is this area right here. We included an allevi, what they refer to as an allevial response area up to here because there are some wells up there. The city of Manavista, probably some of the larger volume, largest volume wells, that do come from the confined aquifer. So, you know, the unconfined have a different effect on surface flows than the confined on all those types of things. So they're going to kind of group the confined aquifer wells. Most, again, a lot of them are here in the Alamosa response area. Canales has a lot of confined wells, too. Some of those, well, I'll tell you flat out, a lot of those boundaries were drawn around farm boundaries and around irrigation, existing irrigation boundaries. What they were trying to avoid, I think, was having one farmer, for example, have three wells in this response area and two over here type of thing.
Thank you, Jen. Rusty?
For Eric, this feels like the last time we talked about water. It's hurry up, we got our rules, now what's going to change? We've got to go through the legal system, of course, and then appeals. How much do you anticipate's going to change from these rules after we get through that system, the legal system?
Well, one of the reasons that the rules have taken so long to develop is that the state engineer has tried to consider as many grounds for objection or for weaknesses in the rules as he could before he promulgates them in an attempt to try to minimize the number and scope of objections that may crop up during the Water Court process. And, you know, frankly, I think he's done a fairly good job of that. It's been a very long process, and part of the reason, and that's one of the reasons that I think that, to answer your question, I would not expect to see a whole lot of change come out of a Water Court challenge at this point. It's been a very thorough rulemaking process. So I think that we can reasonably rely on the general nature of the draft rules that we're seeing.
Thank you. Thank you, Rusty. Are there any other questions for Don or staff? I do have a question, and I guess it basically comes to the conclusion that you've stated here, the rules are not in their final form, but what is known is enough for us to start determining the best strategy for moving forward to address them. And so where do we go from here, staff?
Well, tonight, we will continue part of our discussion in closed session in regards to some of the cost of the different strategies and if staff should start working on implementing some of those strategies. Don, I didn't know if you were going to provide anything else.
Thank you, staff. Well, obviously, we were going to have some expense coming up with some of the rules and regulations that are going to be coming down as they pertain to water. And so we thank you for that update unless there's any more discussion. We will move on to committee reports. Does anyone have a committee report?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, Rusty.
Tree board report. Today, we had a tree board meeting. Couple highlights. Arbor Week for this year is set for April twenty-seventh through May third will be the dates. We're waiting on confirmation of a grant to do the crab apple tree thing we talked about last report by Sunset Park. And also, if anyone's interested, there's a plant expo at Adam State University on the twenty-second, Saturday, Saturday, the twenty-second, at the Evans School Building. And I believe the time they said was eleven to two, but there's flyers out on that, so if anyone's interested in attending that session. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you, Rusty. Charlie?
As your representative on the airport board, we had to go out for a rebid on the new airport, and tomorrow, they're going to open the bids from at two o'clock. So if anybody's interested in going, we're also, we also applied for a mineral impact grant of a million dollars. We'll have to go and present on that here this fall, and that's pretty much it. Oh, one other thing, too, is the carrier out there, they're putting it out for bid again. So they're going, they're asking people to bid a nineteen-passenger plane that will do eighteen non-stops per week, round trips. And right now, our present carrier is having a tough time out there. They came out with some new rules as far as the number of hours that you can sit in the right seat next to the captain. Went up to fifteen hundred hours, which knocked off a lot of pilots. They went from three hundred pilots to seventy, and they're having tough times just making the flights. There's been a lot of cancellations and stuff, and hopefully whoever bids it takes that to mind and are able to fix that.
Thank you, Charlie. Now, some time back, when we were applying for mineral impact, mineral impact grants, didn't some members of council go up to Denver to appeal as well, or was that a different situation? And would you keep us informed and let us know if we need to go up there and, as a group?
Sure. Yeah, we did. We did on this building, remember?
Yes.
We went down there and applied for those monies. Yeah, I think the grant hearings are going to be, they were thinking of Trinidad or Denver, but we'll let you know.
Appreciate that, Charlie.
Yeah, because that's one main function of our community.
Thank you, Charlie. Greg?
Yes, the Cattails Golf Course Board met last month. We had several issues to address. One was the election of officers. Rocky Southway was named president. Steve Atencio vice. Joel Booth Medina secretary. Mike Rogers treasurer. They're going to have a membership meeting tentatively scheduled for March seventeenth. Some other issues that were covered were the HVAC, which upon the bid tonight, that will be installed, hopefully, towards the end of February, early March. During that time, the restaurant will be closed. One of the issues was the cold in the restaurant from the winter months and all the windows. We were looking at thermal blinds, but we're going to hold off on that and see how the new HVAC heats the restaurant, if they're even needed. So we'll address that at a further date. We had some issues from the women's bathroom where the toilet flanges were not sealing. We had some unpleasant odors coming from the sewer system. Hopefully, we have that addressed, but there's the possibility that we may need further work there. Another issue that was of concern was the snow on the north side of the building. Parks and Rec were out there, I believe, two weeks ago with their bucket truck and removed as much of that ice on the north side as they could. That helped a lot. And we are looking at gutter heaters, see if that can help with the freezing issue. Couple of the other items that the lesee at the restaurant would like is vending machines set outside with snacks and drinks, possibly sandwiches when they're not open, considering having two hot dog carts on the course. They would like the board's support in keeping outside food and drinks off the course and everyone using the restaurant for food and drinks. One thing they asked was that we moved the dumpster closer to the clubhouse during the winter months. It was a safety concern, walking all that distance in the dark. And the last issue was the Excel bill is in the city's name, and that's, I believe that's a budget billing question. They're paying one thousand dollars per month, and during the winter months, that's difficult for the golf board to pay. They don't have money coming in during that time, so they were asking the city to address that problem and see if we could possibly do something with that bill. So those are a couple of the issues that we have at the golf course. We also had a library board meeting last week. The staff has purchased CD audio books with the five thousand dollar donation from the Friends of the Library. This included a hundred thirty children's audio books and sixty-six adult audio books. The Alamos Public Library was awarded three thousand dollars from the Colorado State Library for early literacy. The funds were used to subscribe to early literacy online databases, which was Tumble Books and Pebble Go. These will be available for children's access in December. I guess that's taken place. The remaining grant was used for purchases of two hundred and nine literacy books for Storytime and Storybox Projects. That's all I have from the library board. There was also a movie night. I guess they have movie night once a month, and the last movie was Hotel Transylvania.
Thank you, Greg.
Mayor, I had a question for Greg. Is, do they got the count of the usage in there?
Oh, yeah. Every statistic you could ask for.
Because, you know, the other day, I saw buses pulling up here with kids where they use it, and there you see them coming in and out of that. So they're, I'm sure they're using that library very much.
We have new records set almost monthly and certainly in the last year with the new library. We've had records set for almost every item, circulation, adult circulation, children's circulation. Most patrons visited. Just keep breaking those records, so, yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg, Charlie. And that library is a valuable asset in our community, and I'm glad to see that it's being utilized. And the numbers are growing, and we all appreciate that. Governor Hickenlooper, this is not really a committee report, but Counselor Michael Stefano and I were here when Governor Hickenlooper was here, basically talking about his economic development push, bottom, the bottom-up push that he, and so he spoke about different issues, hemp in particular, but water issues as well. So I would encourage, I would encourage anyone that can, the next time the governor's in town, please try to make every effort to be there. The committee report that I do have was, I attended the COG and the DRG, and basically they celebrated, I believe, twenty years being here in the San Luis Valley. That's quite a bit of time, and they have statistics specific to economic development, what they've done with the revolving loan fund to help, I don't know how many different businesses. I can't even enumerate them, but the loan, the loan balance that is available for people that might want to start up a business is between eight hundred and nine hundred thousand dollars in the revolving loan fund presently. So if you know of anyone that is looking to start a business, you might want to talk to Development Resource Group and the people that are handling the revolving loan fund over there. Five eight nine, I believe it's sixty-eighty-nine, but don't quote me on that. I may not have gotten that right. Anyway, are there any other committee reports? If not, we'll go on to staff announcements.
Judy does have a few items. As she's approaching the microphone, I'll make just my quick one. Just a reminder that we have set the retreat for this Saturday, starting at eight AM. We will be serving a light breakfast, drinks, refreshments throughout the day, and then a lunch. We anticipate ending around one-thirty. It could end up being sooner, depending on how the discussion goes. So just a reminder, this Saturday at eight AM, it will be in this room. We'll pull the divider across, and that's where we will be meeting.
Thank you, Heather. Judy?
I have three items for you. The first is, the county is inviting council to a breakfast meeting and is asking if you are available the morning of February eighteenth. That is a Tuesday, I believe. And they will be making the breakfast arrangements. We sort of take turns doing that, and we hosted last time, so they'll be hosting in some way. And we'll get the information to you, but I wanted to make sure everybody's available on that date.
Yeah.
It's a Tuesday. Probably seven AM, around that time era, anyway. They try to get you out by eight.
About an hour.
As good as it gets.
Counsel? I'm good.
If we, if we can shift the time slot, let me know, and I'll see if we can ask to make that happen. Okay. Second thing I have is your board appreciation dinner. This is the annual event that you put on in thanks to those who serve on your advisory boards. I had scheduled that for February twenty-fourth, and after I had that scheduled, I realized that CML has an effective governance workshop that same day, and I know there's at least one of you interested in attending that. So I wanted to see if you were interested in moving the date of that dinner. Invitations have not gone out yet, but they do need to go out in the next couple of days. So we could do that on March third or March tenth, if you have a preference there. Or if you want to keep it on the twenty-fourth, you can do that also.
I'm, uh, March third.
Okay. We could probably go later into March also, if that's better.
Tenth works for major events.
Sounds like the tenth works, okay. I will, I will reschedule that for you, and you can watch for invitations to come out soon. The teaser that I'll tell you in advance is come up with something fun to wear for a fifties night. So get your, you're real excited. You know, they wore jeans and t-shirts in the fifties, just saying.
Fifties night.
So I'll get that rescheduled. The final thing that I have is that, as you know, I've been working toward developing what my actual retirement date might look like, and I've determined that to be May first. So I am going to be starting to develop recruiting materials in anticipation of filling that position for you. As you know, this is your employee in this position, so you will have a lot of say in what that process looks like. We're still in the process of talking through budget issues, and my hope is that we're able to overlap a little bit and get a new person in and started as I'm headed out the door. That is going to require a budget adjustment at some point, but, so, the people who hold the money strings are in the process of working that out for me and letting me know what that might, what we might be able to do there. So if it's agreeable with you, I would just start that recruitment as soon as we know what that budget looks like. And then, once we get more into the process of selecting finalists, we can talk more about what you would like that assessment to look like and interview process to be. Does that sound all right?
Thank you, Judy.
Okay. That's all that I have.
Thank you very much. Are there any other staff announcements? Seeing none, we'll move on to council comment. Gentlemen?
I have a comment. First, I would like to congratulate Judy on her retirement. And when I first interviewed for this council position, I know the question was asked, what role should the city play in supporting local nonprofits? And I... And I just want to say that there are some nonprofit organizations in our community that are doing some great things. And I attended an event today hosted by Tucasa. It's a luncheon, it was a lunch and learn event to where they talked about mediation, partnering with CRP, the Center for Restorative Justice. And I would just like to take this time to encourage the community to support nonprofit organizations throughout our community that are doing great things like Tucasa. And I also would like to encourage the Tucasa staff to continue to do a great job in promoting the services that they provide for these citizens in the Alamosa area.
Thank you, Councilor Coleman. Anyone else? Well, if not, we've got a need for an executive session.
Mayor, I'll go ahead and make that motion that we go into executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6-402 in parentheses 4 and parentheses A to discuss potential real estate acquisitions. Also for CRS 24-6-402, parentheses 4, parentheses B, to receive legal advice from the city attorney. And also CRS 24-6-402, parentheses 4, parentheses E, to discuss matters subjected to negotiations, develop strategies for negotiations, and instruct negotiators. Specific topics to be discussed in this executive session are the following: the Pink Elephant Project, the RV Development Land Swamp, and water acquisition.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Start voting, please.
Can you close it? Thank you. The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Holly. That was my doing. I'm getting better. Thank you, council. And so, now, we'll move into executive session, and there will be no further regular business after the executive session. So, we'll take a few minutes before we do that. Thank you.